2025, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Dylan. Okay, we're gonna start with our invocation given by one of my favorites, Pastor Bill Heitold, and we'll follow that with the pledge led by Commissioner Reardon. If everybody will please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day of giving us a chance to get together here as far as the commission is to vote on some things, to improve the community and help people around these neighborhoods and the like. Overdue, thank you for the rain. Causes problems sometimes, and yet, oh Lord, we do like the moisture and good to see it. Lord, as they spend this time this evening here at the commission meeting, be with them as they make decisions as to how things, money is spent and the like, so that we can be, help people throughout the community to be able to do things a little bit better and maybe a little easier. Do thank you for your blessings for the people on us serve, that you continue to be with all those military and the like who provide for us that we can have these meetings in freedom we do have. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. We are gonna move on to presentations. We have a presentation on the City of Alamogordo Water Master Plan Update. Dave Nunley.
Good evening, Commissioners.
What is Samantha's last name? What is your last name? Cuffrin?
Cuffrin.
Sorry, thank you. It's nice to meet you. I don't believe we've met. Okay, go ahead.
So I'm Dave Nunley, Utilities Director, and tonight we bring to you an update on our master plan. It's been since the 1970s since the city has had a true comprehensive water master plan. It's nearly, that's over four decades. In those, at that time, our city has grown, our infrastructure has aged, and we continue to, you know, make decisions without a roadmap. Why do we need a roadmap? Well, if we don't have a plan, how do we know what direction we're going, you know, realistically? How do we tell subdividers and developers they can come in here and add 300 house subdivisions without being able to adequately tell them, yeah, we can, we can provide adequate fire flow. You know, we've got two six-inch mains, but hey, we need to bring a 12-inch main. This plan provides that roadmap. It's built on a hydraulic water model that shows our system, how it actually performs, and where improvements are needed for water age, for system pressure, for fire flow. It's also needed for our upcoming fire or ISO plan, which historically fires spent, you know, 100,000 here, 100,000 there to get a study done. We get a PDF and they use it for our ISO. We now own that model that where we can run it anytime we need to in-house by incorporating it into our Esri GIS database. For nearly two decades, or two, I should say, two years, I've been working with Samantha and CDM Smith. It's been fun. We've been scrubbing our maps, we've been gathering our data, we've been interviewing operators, and we have been putting this system and testing it out in the field to ensure its accuracy by doing fire flow testing. We've been fixing some problems along the way while we're actually doing it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam.
Thanks, Dave. I hope I know how to work this. Apparently, I don't know how to work this. If anybody knows how to go to next slide, this is the time to tell us.
If it helps anybody, or if it helps at all, everybody has a problem with it.
Okay. All right. I promise that should be the most technical issues we have tonight. I'm Sam Cuffrin. I'm an engineer and a project manager with CDM Smith up in Albuquerque, and I've been working with Dave and the City of Alamogordo staff for the past two years and continue, hopefully continuing for many years to come on developing this comprehensive water master plan, which, as Dave talked about, is critical, as the last one was developed in 1975, to really develop kind of a roadmap to present to not only the city, but the entirety of the commission of, you know, how we did it, you know, what we're seeing and what the city is doing, what the city staff is currently doing to mitigate some of the deficiencies that we've seen in the, in the system. So I'll very quickly go through model, how we developed the hydraulic model, the demands, the water demands for the city. I'll go through how we calibrated the model, and then I'll go through the existing and future scenario modeling, and then the alternatives we looked at, and then finally, what most people here are most interested in, the CIP recommendations for the city. So I'm gonna go through this a little quickly just for time, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. So we developed a model utilizing the city's GIS. We used contours, we assumed diameters when they were unknowns, and we used a lot of data provided by the city, pump curves, pump data, skated data provided, basically anything and everything we can get our hands on to make sure the model was as accurate as possible to reflect real-life conditions. So the current water distribution city is very large and very complex. You can see it on the map, so the city gets its main water from Walu's, and then basically going from right to left, water flows and gets knocked down by PRVs into the six pressure zones throughout the city. Lots of infrastructure in place, including 12 storage tanks, five booster pump stations, 12 PRVs, some smaller PRVs for circulation, and two pressure sustaining valves to assist with the maintenance of pressure near the tanks. There's also, as we all know, Alamog Canyon and 11 wells to provide additional supply to the system. So what did we look at to perform this analysis and make these decisions? We used NMD criteria for the most part for minimum pressure and maximum pressure. We analyzed pipe velocity just to ensure that, you know, there's no scouring in the pipes. We evaluated water age, which, for everybody's knowledge, so water age is essentially what it sounds like, how old is the water in the pipe. Why this matters is because the longer that water sits in pipes without getting to a destination, your house, et cetera, and there is a possibility for the treatment process to get a little funky within the pipes. You know, that can lead to discoloration, that can, you know, the contact time changes. So essentially, you know, water age is a secondary criteria, but it is important as we want everybody to be delivered with, you know, healthy, clean water when it's used. So for fire flow, we assumed, you know, 500 GPM minimum across the system as a requirement, and then we analyzed the storage and pumping capacity. So existing water demand. So we analyzed the 14K-plus customers utilizing billing data provided by the city, and based on that analysis, it looks like the city, on an average day, is supplied by approximately 4.9 MGD with approximately 3.3 MGD of billing data or consumption, i.e. the water that we all consume as residents, which equates to some water loss of approximately 1.6 MGD, or 33%. And this is what the historic water production looks like, shown from daily gallons. This shows that basically over the past 15 years, we've, the city has been relatively steady at around, you know, peaking, but around, you know, 5 MGD. And we did this analysis to ensure that that was indicative of current conditions, and we developed essentially a peak factor to get from average day to maximum daily demand. Why is max day demand important? Because on the day with the most demand, typically in the summer with irrigation, we need to ensure that your infrastructure and everything in place can meet all criteria on the most conservative situation. So everybody's running their water, there's fire, irrigation, et cetera. Your system has to be sized adequately to be able to account for that peak day. So in order to allocate those demands, we allocated per billing data, per meter. We also included diurnal patterns for each customer type, so whether you're residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, like a school. We wanted to ensure that the usage pattern was adequately assigned so that we best, so that the model best reflected how water is actually used. Diurnal patterns will vary, but as shown, a residential curve typically has a double diurnal, so peaks when we're all taking showers, getting ready in the morning, goes down when most people are at work, goes back up when we're coming home, making dinner, doing all of that. In addition, to get us from existing conditions to future conditions, to further support the city's water plan for the next 20 years, we met with Dave and other city staff to discuss what the anticipated developments would be over the next 20 years, so that we're not just globally assigning an increase in demand, we're actually pinpointing where the demand will accurately and actually occur. So we met, there's approximately, you know, 12 or so known areas of development, those are shown on the map, and we did an analysis based on land use parcels, the annual growth rate per the development plans of 1.2%, and we used all of that data, including census data, to assign future demands specifically to those projected areas of growth. So what does all that mean? Because that's a lot to speak. So currently, the demand is around, or I should say, you know, the supply is around 4.9 MGD. In 20 years, or 20 years from when the analysis started, so 2043, we're looking at an average day of about 6.65 MGD, so an increase of almost 2 MGD, 2 MGD over 20 years. And for our max day, we're looking at going from approximately 8.76 to just about 12 MGD. So we're looking at the city being able to support 12 MGD holistically over the next 20 years. And so how did we get started with this analysis? We were out here, October 2nd through the 5th of 2023, and we performed 26 hydrant tests all across the city, locations of which are shown on the screen. And why do we, why do we go out and do fire hydrant testing? We do it so that we're able to calibrate the model to a suitable level to be used for planning level purposes, to be able to get our model to mimic what is actually occurring in the field. And what came out of this is we recommended various locations for city staff to investigate for partially closed valves, verification of pipe sizes, all things like that, and with also the recommendation for further investigation of one of the pressure zones. And to our knowledge, and after conversations that we've had with Dave and the city, a lot of our findings were deemed correct. So that gave us a large level of confidence in our model, and we could start making decisions on a planning level. So for the existing and future system modeling, we use two different scenarios. We use an average day, so typical day, typically, you know, think April, October, when there's not a lot of irrigation, just a regular day when everybody's using a normal amount of water. And then we use a max day, so think right now, when people are irrigating and demand is incredibly high. So we use an average day to simulate maximum pressures and water age, where they would be at their highest, and we use a max day as, as a level of conservatism to evaluate your minimum system pressures, your maximum velocities, and your available fire flow, because that would be the worst case in which those would occur. So all of the demands are assumed to be supplied by Walu's in the future. In addition to that analysis and setting up the future system, we spoke with the city at all of their, the CIP as of 2023, so that includes the Zone 4 and Zone 5 improvements that are currently going on. A new 14-inch along Oregon Avenue from Mountain View Ave to Indian Wells Road, that will replace the current 8-inch, some zone boundary revisions between Zone 2 and 3, so i.e. there was a bleeding zone valve that has been closed, stuff like that, and some, a lot of other smaller projects, because, and it doesn't a capital improvements plan, you know, the city is constantly, you know, doing their line work, you know, replacement, replacing pipes as necessary, et cetera. So what did all this yield in terms of the work? So we analyze, when we analyzed maximum pressures, we noted that Zone 2 and Zone 3 had pressures upwards of about 120 PSI. That is very elevation-driven, just due to the size of those two zones and the area and elevation that it covers. And we looked at it in the future, and we looked at it in the existing, and it was essentially similar problem, same thing, and I'll table that to discuss in a little bit for how we analyzed it. We analyzed water age, both future and existing, and water age, so we're looking at the photo, we're looking at the images, think dark red and brown being high water age, the lighter colors being, you know, short water age, water recycling. So we noted that in the existing, Zone 4 had high water age, as well as some areas on the boundary of Zone, the Zone 2A, which is where you live, all the way to the north of, of the city, and that was confirmed in the field as well. And then some tanks had some high water age. Why is that important? Because we want, as engineers and for the city, we want to ensure that the water infrastructure in the form of tanks are cycling as much as possible, so that the water is being refreshed at all times, the tanks are cycling in a way to provide distribution to the customers without getting stagnant. So we looked at that in the existing and future, and water age, as I said, is typically a secondary criterion, where we won't make all of the planning decisions based on it, but we still have some recommendations that are coming to better optimize the operation of this, of the system. So what we are all a little bit more concerned with, minimum pressure, so the majority of the city, so all the customers are getting water at above 40 PSI, at above 35 PSI. There are, there were some areas in the existing scenario, particularly in Zone 4, based on elevation, that are slightly below that, and that's due to what we believe is a restriction downstream of the Hamilton PRV near in Zone 4. And the minimum pressures in the future scenario slightly improve, even though demands get higher because of the improvements that will be in place from the, the Zone 4 and Zone 5 improvements. And then there's other very small areas, very, very isolated areas, that are seeing pressures at just about 35. So minimum pressure in the city looks good for the foreseeable future. In a similar vein, we looked at maximum velocities, which is typically coupled with minimum pressure. So the majority of the system, the velocity in the pipes is adequate. This is also a secondary criterion. There are some exceptions throughout the city, specifically where, where the city is being supplied with water, but this is not any issue and won't be an issue in the next 20 years. So the other big one that we're all concerned about, so fire flow. So as of now, the majority of the fire hydrants in Zone 4, so Southwest, are showing as having less than 500 GPM available. So if you were to do a fire hydrant test, you probably wouldn't get more than 450 GPM out of that hydrant. We noted that when we were in the field. And then there's a few areas of isolated low fire flow, so there's one along Utah Ave. That's because that pipe is, is a 2-inch that is to be replaced within the year with a 6-inch, and I believe those plans are currently, that is to happen any minute. And then at the zone boundary in the north of Zone 2A and 3, that area along Driftwood also shows as having low fire flow, which was confirmed in the field. And then in the future, all of Zone 4 is helped with, once again, the Zone 4 and 5 improvement, so that's good. And then there's just a few similar areas of lower fire flow that we'll discuss in the CIP improvements. So in addition to all of that, we also analyzed the storage and pumping capacity of the city, as there aren't inherent criteria for the state. We utilize TCEQ, so the Texas Commission, as it's, you know, a neighboring state, they are very stringent with their requirements. So the, that analysis did not include the Brackish Water Reverse Osmosis Treatment Plant and the associated infrastructure. That is still incredibly important as a point of resiliency, because we live in a drought area, but the analysis indicated that the city has sufficient storage and pumping. Throughout 2023, we would really like to see, you know, that plant come online for that continued resiliency for the city. So what does all this mean in terms of improvements that, to be recommended for the city? So, and a lot of these are fire flow-driven, as Dave was talking about. So one recommendation that we had is a new 6-inch main in Zone, the 3R, so the reduced zone, so this is by the golf course area. So this would aid that fire, that, aid that fire flow, as well as mitigate a little bit of the lower pressures that we're seeing in the future. Similar, that area on Scenic Drive between Rosewood and Mosswood, we would, we're proposing to install a 6-inch all across that boundary to help a few things. One, to aid with fire flow, two, to aid with circulation throughout the zone. Why does that help? Because it's always good to have a good amount of water circulating to prevent instantaneous events that can occur, such as water hammer, or just, you know, a quick event, like a pump station shuts down really quickly and pressure spike. Circulation helps, you know, that circulation will help improve water quality, et cetera, throughout that zone. The, another improvement that had been discussed previously is to install an 8-inch loop just right on, just right south of Cottonwood Drive and move the boundary valve. That would also allow for a more continuous flow of water through the zone, which just helps aid in water quality and water delivery as well. So going back to these high static, static pressures we are seeing in Zones 2 and 3, so we have to think about, you know, the definition of, you know, high pressure. So these pressures get from 100 to 120. The mitigation required if the city were to have improvements would essentially be a lot of valves creating a lot of dead ends. It's not exact, it's not a practical solution from an infrastructure and a cost perspective, so the recommendation there is for the city to require in-home individual PRVs where the pressure is above 80 PSI, and that language to be adopted into the ordinance.
Quick question on that.
Yeah.
Would, and this might be for staff, but would that cost be incurred by the resident or by the city to install those?
So typically, that would be incurred, the cost would be incurred by the resident, and the city would typically, you know, either have a third-party plumber on hand, et cetera, but there's a few different ways that the city can choose to handle that.
So that's in the, a lot of the older areas that were stated. That's the older areas of town, right, over off Indian Wells and, and down there, Arnold and Dewey and?
Yeah, primarily. It's in the areas.
Center of town.
Yeah, and it's by design, you know, so I mean, like she said, if we were to go in and change it, it would cost the city millions of dollars, putting in PRVs and/or creating dead-end zones all over, so. Right now, what we do recommend for customers that do have an exceedance, and it does cause them problems with their irrigation systems, et cetera, we usually recommend that they put a, an inline PRV, which they're fairly inexpensive, you know, just depends if you do it yourself and/or have to have a plumber.
Just was wondering, because that's gonna affect quite a few residents in that section of town, so.
And, yeah, I mean, we've been dealing with that. This is part, goes back to why we have a model now to ensure, like, the area, the new area behind Holiday Inn Express that was allowed to just go in, all of those houses have exceedance of 110-plus PSI, you know, and there should have been a PRV put in before that ever happened, and then we could have maintained it, but it was, we didn't have a model to say, yeah, you can do it. So this will help that in the future.
Kind of an expense are we looking at for the residents?
I would have to.
If they are being, be forced to put those in.
Relatively inexpensive. So this ordinance, this, sorry. It's relatively inexpensive. This recommendation that we're requiring is pretty standard throughout a lot of neighboring communities, and it, it is on the lower end of pricey. I would say no more than a thousand, depending on if they're utilizing a plumber, if they're doing it themselves.
Okay.
Per house.
A thousand dollars per house?
No more than a thousand, and we're talking like, yeah, I mean, typically, they kind of say, you know, 300 to 500 dollars a pop, so.
And there's no other way around, other than forcing the residents to, to cure the problem, rather than the city figuring out a way to do it?
Typically, yes, because that, the problem is elevation-driven, so that, that's a low point of the system, and in order to solve, just because that zone covers so much area of the city, if you're going to demarcate the zone and alleviate, like, alleviate those higher pressures, you're talking million, as Dave was saying, you're talking millions and millions of dollars with potential risks, because you'd be creating a lot of dead ends. So that would cause water age issues, so really, the gain that the city would get kind of pales in comparison. So really, the gain that the city would get kind of pales in comparison to the cost and the risk associated with creating a mini-zone. And I, I should say in general, seeing high pressure for them, it might not always be an, it, it might not be a quote-unquote issue. It just depends. Like some houses will see less than a hundred PSI, some will see more. So, and you know, the pressure gets knocked down as you go from distribution to plumbing. So it's really kind of a, at the customer's.
Discretion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good question. So going through just more improvements throughout the city, one of the recommendations that we have is essentially a reconfigured zone three at the connection near White Sands and Highway eighty-two. So we're essentially recommending a twelve-inch loop to be installed from White Sands Boulevard near Scenic. And once again, you know, and moving, closing the gate valve, et cetera. So we're recommending this because the current eighteen-inch valve, that is transmission main, so that incurs higher pressure along that line. We're suggesting that we allow that line, because that line goes out to the west side tanks. We're saying let that transmission main not be tapped into, let it flow. You get all the transmission going to the tanks, as it should, to get your maximum capacity, maximum water, and let this twelve-inch loop be built for zone three to allow, once again, that continuous flow throughout the zone, which will aid in pressure, water quality, and other water criteria. And so something else that we looked at in looking at future development was planned developments north of zone one. So we're looking at kind of like the real northeast in that square. So that particular square has a very large elevation variation. So we're looking at forty-six seventy to fifty-seven seventy. So that's at least a hundred and ten feet across one area to serve. If development were to occur there, it would require multiple pressure zones, about eleven. And to maintain that thirty-five to eighty PSI that we look for as working pressure. And it would need various booster stations to serve that projected seventy-five GPM that that area is looking at. Another way in the future to help that area is to search for a water source, an additional water source near the top of that area, especially if the top of that area develops first. Searching for a water source near the top of that, you know, it would alleviate a lot of additional infrastructure in those pressure zones in the boosters, et cetera. So just something to think about if that area is to develop, which it sounds like there's a possibility it will. So going back to high water age mitigation. So once again, something that we typically, aside from looping, don't put a lot of CIP recommendations into, but we do look at it from a system operation standpoint to ensure that the city, that the water system is operating to the best of its ability. So some of the recommendations that we developed to mitigate that higher water age and see and have better quality in the water is to essentially open up, there's a one-inch PRV near Alamo Canyon Water Plant. We're going to open it up as much as possible to allow for more water circulation. And something else that we looked at is essentially closing all of multiple PRVs. So First Street, Wright Ave, Callahan, Zia, all throughout zone one, zone two, zone three, and zone four. And what closing the PRVs does is it promotes water instead of the typical path of going, you know, from zone one to zone two, zone three, you don't, or right to left across your system. It promotes water to strictly go right into the tanks and then right to the customers. And during lower flow periods, such as the winter, that's the best way to decrease your water age in the pipes and to promote circulation throughout the system. And for those, that like visuals, with doing this water age mitigation, all of the tanks and everything reaches an equilibrium under about ten days, with the majority reaching equilibrium after five days. And no more than seven days in terms of aging your pipes is, it's not a hard rule, but it's typically what we look for. And then additional recommendations, because we're getting to the good part, is for the implementation of a SCADA program for all infrastructure, which is currently in the works, to perform a water audit, to help, I guess, quantize those water losses that we had noticed in the data and to assist with that to get the water loss down. We just submitted a scope to the city to do that work. So hopefully, we can get started on that ASAP. To implement a systematic valve exercising program. So something that the staff does just to, just to kind of increase the frequency of, you know, ensuring that, you know, we're exercising all of the valves, ensuring they're functional, making sure to the best of the city's ability that there's no closed valves where there shouldn't be closed valves after maintenance in the city, because that can affect water distribution. And to, and the implementation of an asset management plan to essentially capture all of the infrastructure that the city has and when it should be replaced, renewed, looked at, et cetera. So the important stuff. The recommended CIP that we recommended for the city of Alam Goredo, with all of those pipeline infrastructure recommendations that we described for fire flow and water circulation and the four things that we just discussed, the total CIP cost is around four point three eight million. So some additional recommendations that we have from a non-monetary perspective. There were some, bless you, there were so, some zone recommendations that were recommended as part of the zone four and zone five improvements. We're just going to switch the boundaries on those as the original plan was causing or was causing model predicted issues with fire flow. We're going to rename all of the zones. So zone two A, nobody knows what the A means. I'm still trying to figure that one out. But we renamed all of the zones to zone one through seven. And we're including what's noted there as the elevation or also the hydraulic grade line. Why is that important? Because that small change, when an operator is new in the field, not sure what's going on, that number allows an operator instantaneously to know, okay, this is the head of the zone. This is what the PRV reading should be. And it just, you know, makes the operational standpoint and it of what they're doing a lot quicker and a lot easier to very quickly see this is the fee, you know, what do we need to do, what's happening if there's an issue. Another recommendation is to, as we had discussed, to adopt language in the city ordinance to require the individual PRVs for pressure above eighty. When the zone four and five improvements do go on the ground, and I realize I've been saying zone four and five improvements without describing them if they weren't known, but essentially along Highway seventy, there are, there is currently a plan in place to replace those parallel pipelines north and south with a, two twelve inches. And that'll better help with capacity in the system. And with the PRVs that will be placed on those lines, we're just recommending that they get, that their settings are set a little bit differently. Because when you have two PRVs right next to each other set at the same thing, they will chatter, meaning they will fight with each other. And that just causes, you know, just a little bit of noise in the system. So the last and very important adoption to the city ordinance that we're recommending is the recommendation of a minimum of five hundred GPM for fire roads, for fire flow system-wide, while maintaining a minimum pressure of twenty PSI in the system. And the twenty PSI is obviously, is governed by the EPA.
Real quick, I'd like to add the adoption of that language that would be primarily aimed at new development. So if we had a new development that was going in and in a location that just across the tracks that currently has a hundred-plus PSI, there would be required as part of that development to put those PRVs in line as part of the building. For the old houses, most of them, there's a lot of people that would be upset if we went in there and affected it. Because they, they like to say, hey, I can run three escalating sprinklers right now. I don't want to go down to one. I mean, but some people, obviously, it causes issues, you know. I mean, most of your water heaters, the recommendation on them is not to exceed eighty. So that's why we had adopted seventy-five. And the same thing with the fire flow would be the five hundred to make sure all new development that, at a minimum, we have to meet five, five hundred, which, you know, if we're connecting to the existing six-inch does not supply that, then we need to require them to add a twelve-inch to get there. And that's what we'd have to require at that point.
Thank you for your analysis and presentation. Where do we lose most water?
A lot of the water is lost through aging infrastructure. Obviously, we have a lot of old steel lines that have been in the ground for seventy-plus years. We lose a lot through meters, you know. I mean, meters start to, AWWA recommends that we replace meters on a twelve-year cycle. And we are currently on year, we replaced them in twenty fourteen, so we're eleven years into that. The mechanics and the meters start to break down, you know, and so we start recording less. We still have the same water going out, but a lot of times we're recording less, we're recording more, so we get inaccurate data that way. So both of those. And then, yeah, primarily just aging infrastructure.
Yeah, and also additionally, you know, flushing when that's to occur. Any sources of unmetered water, there's a lot of sources of water loss within a system.
And in your recommendations, do you have suggestions to mitigate that?
So for now, the best course of action is the water audit, which was the recommendation to perform one by an engineer. Because that, with that analysis, we'll go through AWWA's M thirty-six and we'll go through like that analysis of where the water is actually being lost from. And that's where those mitigation strategies will come in, will be determined.
What would that audit cost, ballpark figure?
Probably in between forty and fifty thousand. And that's really, that's an essential part of any water master plan. That, a distribution analysis, a source water analysis, meaning going up to our wells, Benito, water quality analysis to start looking at what can we do to improve our water quality to our customers, you know. I mean, that's, that's a high note. Our water's hard. It's some of the hardest water in the nation, you know. But and can we improve it? Absolutely. We can do lime softening, I mean, peroxide. There's lots of things that we can do, however, that comes ultimately at a cost to the rate there. So we want to effectively, you know, hand that off to an engineering team and dive all the way into that so we can bring to you, here's some solutions, here's what the cost is, and present it not only to you guys, but on the record that we, you know, our customers here are like, you know, well, we don't want to, we want better water quality, but we don't want to pay that much for water, you know. I mean, it's, 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 it all comes at a cost, so.
Are you promising Les Calici?
No, I'm never promising anything. Right now that we're bringing, brought Benito on, we're already starting to see our hardness drop a little. Historically, we used to run at about thirty-three grains per gallon. Right now, we're at about forty-two grains per gallon. So we're hoping over the next year, as we start to transition more water in from Benito, that we start to see those grains per gallon go down significantly. I mean, you're still going to be changing your swamp cooler pads out, you know, efficiently twice a year, you know. And hydro, you know, water heaters, we recommend flushing them manually. But I'm a water operator and I'll tell you, I don't flush mine annually. You know, it's like, it's like a plum, you know, plumber's got leaks, mechanic's got a backfiring car, oil leaks, you know.
Thank you.
I have a question. Where did you say zone four to, four and five were, did you say Highway seventy? What did you say?
Yeah, so here, let me. I think this is best, I think this is best illustrated with Dave.
Yeah, it's really hard to read even on our slides, so.
Yeah.
Could you just give us like a paper copy of the zones? I can't really tell off of the diagram either.
Yeah, I can provide you guys with a copy of the hydraulic map in its current state. And then after we implement this plan, this was the plan that we proposed during the rates for redoing the thirteen thousand feet of twelve-inch mains that parallel the highway from basically the old Walmart all the way to Airport Road. This actually changed some of that design, because we evaluated more things. So we implemented a few changes that way. When we do this, we're going to get the, we're going to be able to, we're going to be able to improve water quality and water age and fire flow for that entire Walker area. That's exciting for me.
Okay, so that's where it's at, that it's that area, the Walker area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when is that going to start?
I believe design is. I think we're probably within about six weeks of design. And of course, we'll do a final review on the ninety percent. And then, once we get to a hundred percent, we'll put the bid documents together and then we will let that one out on the streets.
Okay, so first of the year maybe?
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay.
Hopefully sooner, because I want to, I want to get that one done. That is a problematic portion of the system, not only from water breaks, but for disinfection byproducts, which are a cause from water age too. You know, we'd, we'd had elevated disinfection byproducts two years ago. We started to spike towards eighty parts per million, which is our maximum exceedance level. And now we've corrected that through flushing. But we know if we implement these new zone valves and, and change the rate that it's flowing out there, we're going to improve that significantly too.
So what, what is the timeframe of that, once it starts?
Realistically, that's a big one. We've got a lot of.
Because it's big, yeah.
Yeah. I'd probably say the construction and all that's probably just over a year. I might be wrong. Eddie's been working on that.
Yeah, probably a year to, year ahead.
Oh, my goodness.
But.
I can hear it. Oh, no, I won't have to hear it now, but somebody's going to hear it now.
However, bear in mind, that does not affect travel. That's not tearing up the roads. Only time we do impact the road is where we cross it, like Walker, we cross at Collins. Very few impacting on, on the residents. Most of it's in the right-of-way of the DOT. We have, I think, five boars under the highway, four along the Highway seventy and one out there by Wright Street. And that's to interconnect more water into that zone to, for water age and of course, fire flow. It's, it's a huge improvement for that area.
Yeah, no, it's going to be huge.
Unfortunately, we're trying to fix things that were adopted, you know, by commission, you know, forty, fifty years ago. You know, we're coming in and trying to fix these problems because it is continued, you know, concerns from the residents out there, you know. They say, well, it's always breaking and nobody cares about us. Now, we do care and we do hear you, but it's a lot of, a lot goes into making that plan to correct it and correct it right the first time.
Yeah, and I think that's what people don't understand. It's not like we say, oh, we're going to do this and then just get in there and start digging. So there's so much that goes into it, so much pre-planning before the actual execution. So that's why I wanted, yeah, that's why I wanted, because I, I know that I've even gotten questions about it or, you know, heard complaints about it. And, and I understand that this takes time, but it's good to just say it, put it on the record so everybody understands it's not. We just don't get in there with a backhoe and start digging. It doesn't work that way.
It's really exciting for my team, you know, just to get out there and do something. It's going to affect so many people out in that area, including my wastewater plant, who's at the very end of that problem, so.
No, I think everybody wants it for sure. It's, it just, it feels like progress when that kind of stuff happens.
It definitely is.
Yeah. And I know you're excited, so. All right. Did you have another question? No? Okay. All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it. That was, yeah, that was information overload, right? Did I tell you there was going to be a pop quiz? I'm kidding. All right, fine.
Hey Dylan, something happened and like I got kicked out of my portal.
We can move on to public comment while I help Commissioner burn out with that issue.
Okay. So we have two people signed up for public comment. Just a reminder, you do get three minutes. And we are going to start with Christine Duncan. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. You have to come up here, state your name for the record. This is not an action item, so we cannot have a dialogue back and forth, but if there's. But if there's any concerns, you can certainly speak with our city manager. And she would, or our city attorney or whatever the case may be. And they can take the information and somebody will get back with you.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
Okay, so, do I go ahead?
If you'll just state your name for the record.
Oh, my name is Christine Duncan. I am a teacher at North Elementary. I live on the corner of 14th and Florida, which is, there's a crosswalk. There's a crosswalk right across from 14th that goes to the North Elementary, to their playground. So I walk that every day in the morning and in the evening. But what I've noticed is that since they've opened up the playgrounds to the children in the community, there's a lot more kids crossing that crosswalk. And there's a lot of danger there. I have issues trying to get across that crosswalk. I go early in the morning, so I don't have problems in the morning. But I leave work at 3:20, and by then, the crosswalk lights are off, and people do not stop for me. I will have traffic, go, go, go. I have to wait like a long time before I can cross. On Friday, which is why I'm here, on Friday, I had two city police officers crop, just not even stop at the crosswalk. And I'm standing there, the first one went by, and honestly, I was mad. So I was waving my lunchbox, and then like 10 minutes, 10 seconds later, the other one passed me.
They were state police officers?
And I'm like, okay, this is a problem of city.
Oh, city.
City, two of us, two city.
Did you get that? Two city, I'm giving you a hard time, sorry.
So I think that it, it, it needs to be considered some, some better safety at that crosswalk. Number one, the kids are going over there to play on the playground now. I would like to see the crosswalks brighter, maybe freshened up every once in a while. There's, there's crosswalks around here that I, I can't even see sometimes. I don't know if they've been refreshed on 10th Street, but 10th Street is one of them. Sometimes I come up on a crosswalk and I don't even know it's there. This one on, on Florida and 14th, perhaps some better, more painting, fresher painting on there, perhaps something like that's over here across from the library and the city, where you push the button and the lights come on, so people can get across safely, especially kids. And so that's, I'm just kind of looking for some improvements there because it is dangerous. I have a hard enough time, so my, the kids around there are having a hard time.
Thank you. I think she made notes, so.
Yeah, I, she emailed me, or Mrs., the other lady emailed me, and I got in contact with Stephanie about it, so.
Okay, perfect. All right. Next, we have Sheri Moore.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sheri Moore. I am a La Luz resident, but I'm also the president of the La Luz Water Association. I live on Benito, which is directly across from Valley View, so we're neighbors. And in the progression of 20 years, the Quintus property has become more of a flood zone. I don't know how your people even drive on that frickin' road on Valley View, quite frankly. Because of the water, it has cut the road down to one vehicle going in. To add insult to injury, the state approved Dollar General to move in on that corner. And behind Dollar General tonight, in two hours' time, we had an inch and a quarter water coming down that road and across that land. And I've been working with the county to get people to slow down on that road, on La Luz Road, because I think we're going to have some major problems. I mean, I don't want your employees to be hurt. I don't want my community members to be hurt. But people barrel through there, and even with all the water that runs over the road, I'm curious as to when the project the city has going on to put those culverts or those drainage ditches in. I understand, I was on the call with the company that you've had to design it, and it's supposed to be going soon. Could somebody tell me when that is supposed to happen? Yes, no?
Yeah, Dave, when is it? So, so Dave has been trying to contact you so that you can get the information. I asked him to contact you several times, and he wasn't able to get ahold of you.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem Commissioners.
We don't normally do this, but I'm, now I'm really curious, so.
So that project is actually going to be completed here the next few weeks. It's at 100% completion. When it comes to funds, I don't know if you have anything allocated at that point for a budget. But for design part, it will be completed within like three weeks or so. And that drainage was, it was done about last year in September, all the way up till now. So it's going to show a different drain system to make sure that a lot of that flooding goes south back into the property to where it's not going into La Luz Road. So it'll be cutting through our road inside the property, so.
Does that help?
Well, it does. My concern is, in talking with the county, you know, the city has closed off Valley View up higher on the road, okay?
Right.
And that design, which I think is a beautiful thing, I just want you to speak it up. Okay, that's really what I want.
Well, so it was.
The wheels of government ought to be very slow, unfortunately.
It was supposed to be done a month ago. So when Dollar General came in, they had designed a road to go into the property. So our engineer that we have on call got with the engineers for Dollar General and made sure that we're not overlapping projects on the road. So they got together, they made sure that their design matches our design. So they paid for that asphalt and everything that was done that's there now. So that way, when we do our project, it connects to theirs. So everything flows properly and still the same drainage model. So whatever Dollar General did is based off of our design as well.
Yeah, you need to.
Now it is, but.
You need to go out there.
Okay, so maybe we can.
Since this is Commissioner, since this is.
Maybe we can continue this afterwards? Yeah. If you want to, if you want to get with them, it sounds like they've been trying to get ahold of you. And maybe you can, or if you want to go out there, if you want to go out in the lobby, you can do that as well. Thank you. Sorry. I thought it would be much simpler than that. I apologize. So, okay. And I have no clue what they're talking about, by the way. I apparently need to drive out there.
And Dave had been trying to contact her like four or five times.
Yeah. No, I believe you. I just.
Yeah, I drive that road every day. It's going up quick.
Yeah. Okay. I might just take a drive to La Luz. It's been a while since I've been there. Okay. Moving on, we are going to, I think we're going to forego the city manager's report. We're not going to forego. Okay, she has one thing, and then we're going to hear from PNM. Is that correct? Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. I just, just really quick, some of you might already know this because you work with the Sacramento Foundation. But I just wanted to mention that the Sacramento Foundation is hosting Terry Bradshaw. He's going to be coming on September the 22nd to do a talk about resiliency and bouncing back. And that's at the Taze Center, September 22nd, 6 to 8, and it's free. So I just wanted to mention that because I thought that was pretty cool that they're, they're doing that. So I wanted to mention it for the Commissioner and the public. And then now I'm going to defer to Isaac and Kevin to talk about PNM. They wanted to speak about some of the outages and things going on. And rather than me relay the information to you, I thought it's best that they relay it directly to you.
Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cardosa. I'm the local government and community manager for PNM in Southern New Mexico. First of all, Stephanie, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes just to touch base on what has happened in the last couple of months. I under, we understand that there have been a handful of outages that we have experienced here in Alamogordo. And we just wanted to share a little bit of information as to what happened and to make sure that you have all the, all the data and appropriate information as to what we have been facing in the last, last couple of months. With me, I have Isaac Munsey. He's our field operations supervisor for the Alamogordo area. He is going to go into further details as to what we have seen in the last few outages.
Good evening. So historically, you know, outages commonly happen in the later hours of the evening, 10 o'clock and on. And unfortunately, unfortunately, the exposure of these outages have hit hard recently because they've happened such on a Sunday for a duration of seven-plus hours and in daytime hours. And every situation we've had over the past few months have truly been due to acts of God. Every one of these locations where we've had infrastructure failure have been patrolled within the past four to, previous four to five months of these situations. We have record and data to support this. But due to some of the aggressive winds and rains, which are not uncommon to this area, but just the timing of some of these weather events have hammered on our system and slowly, slowly shown some of the, the weak points. And unfortunately, like the July, I believe it was 17th outage, it was on a Sunday, Saturday, sorry, seven hours, around 3,400 customers were out during the heat of the day. It was just a rare situation where we had a bad rain that a previous night before, softened a bunch of wood crossarms, had some early morning wind. And we had several spans of infrastructure between our substation and the sawmill that failed. Due to the location of that failure and the amount of load we were seeing at that point of failure and expecting at noon that day, we were unable to reroute power without almost instantaneously rolling blackouts and brownouts to these other areas. And so there was a center portion of town from the bypass all the way to the mountain between 10th and 1st Street that experienced a seven-hour outage. We worked very hard, brought in extra crews, and gained access to those areas that, you know, we had some access issues due to mud and water. But for that situation, it was noticed way more than normal because of the time of day it happened. And so most of the Commissioners, Madam Mayor, city officials, everyone has my personal number. Reach out anytime during these large outages, and I'm happy to give a moment-by-moment updates to keep everyone going. 99% of the time, I'm on site with the crews. We have a total of 24 support PNM staff in Otero County. Only seven of them are field linemen able to perform this work. So just like this evening, prior to the meeting, we had roughly 130 customers out south on Hamilton. And so they were out there performing those repairs in the lining in rain on live wires.
That's terrible.
We appreciate the patience and all the support. We really appreciate the extra support we've had lately on all the comment groups because they've able to, be able to come by and see us actually working and see the conditions. So Kevin's available. I'm available whenever anyone needs us. And we're able to update you as those, we repair those outages.
And one thing to add is that we've been experiencing this extreme weather events all throughout the state, not just isolated to Alamogordo, unfortunately. So oftentimes, we tried our very best to keep up with the most up-to-date information on our social media. But at the same time, while we're dealing with a big outage, let's just, as an example, in Alamogordo, we're dealing with a big one out in Valencia County and some other sections of Bernalillo. So we try, we tried our very best to, to maintain our forms of communication up to date. But I have shared my contact information with Stephanie, that she can share my business card with each of the Commissioners. And when you're experiencing any issues within your district, just please feel free to reach out. We'll do our very best to get back to you in a timely fashion. As a member of the Government Affairs Team, there's no such a thing as I'm off the clock. So, you know, there's been times that it's late in the evening or middle of the day on the weekend, I'm texting Stephanie, the mayor, letting them know what's going on with whatever we may be experiencing. So we're here to, to be good community partners and to, to help you as much as we can in the most safely fashion possible, so.
I will say you are a phenomenal communicator. Phenomenal, yes. I can't complain. When the, when the, so when the electricity went up at, at my house, that's rare. For whatever reason, my side of the sun streets, it, we rarely ever get an outage. We do on the north side of 10th, but not on the south side of 10th. But anyway, it went out, and I was like, oh, I need to go grab my city phone because Kevin's going to call me any minute now. And you did. So you, you really are a great communicator. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything?
I just want to follow up on the, Stephanie, were you able to get an idea of how much it would cost to do that traffic study?
We haven't got the quote back yet, but we're expecting it this week.
Okay. That's just in reference to the Indian Wells in Juniper. Apparently, there was a traffic study done about a year ago, and they didn't see significant traffic to really do anything about it, but I think it's, traffic has increased there substantially.
That's the Walmart, the small mart Walmart area?
It's, it's, you can sit there for a very long time and try to get out, and it's, it's not happening, so.
It has been a source of discussion since that Walmart went up, actually.
Yeah, so I was, I was just encouraging Stephanie to get some kind of, I know it may cost us a little bit, but I think it's, I think it's needed.
Do we not have traffic counters anymore, Varl?
We have, we can put the traffic counters, but to change or put a light, we need an actual traffic study. That's all I have. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? No? Quiet at night. All right. Well, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda?
Item number five.
Item five, okay. Anything else?
Item eight. Item eight.
Item eight. Item five and eight. Five and eight. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item two, three, four, six, and seven on the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please? Hello there. Item, I'm sorry, motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to item five, consider and act upon the Public Works Bid 2025-002, and it's pertaining to Alameda Zoo wall improvements.
Correct. I left notes in the agenda, so I was just down here for a question.
Can you, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello? Hello. All right. So I gave you guys the information on the agenda, so I was just down here for a question.
Well, I just want to know what's, how's it going over there, for one?
It's going good, actually. So when I bid this project out, it was a bid lot one and an alternate bid. Alternate bid goes from the duck pond all the way to the remainder of the wall. So they actually got four foot of the wall up now on the west side. So they're actually pretty much almost done with the duck pond area. This here is, like I said, put in the agenda, asking for the funds to proceed to the rest of the wall.
So there's been some concerns raised about the company that's actually doing the actual work, the.
Concerns by.
Their license possibly not being the correct license to actually erect the wall.
Yeah, whoever.
But do the footings.
So whoever gave that information is not correct. We have permits by CID. They have permits by CID, so they actually have all the licenses that they are required to have to do the wall.
And that, that was the other question, is that we got a couple of visits from the state out there about permits not being pulled.
Yeah.
On that project.
Yeah, so there was miscommunication when it came down to that from the engineer that designed it to, all the way up to where it was at now. CID and I and the contractor all worked together. They got the permits pulled, and that's why they're continuing work.
And then I guess there was a visit from the Railroad Commission about flatteries.
Yes, and that was because a, they would not tell me the name, or I won't say the name, but a certain contractor called them. name, but a certain contractor called them complaining about that contractor working in the right of way. They, so Uni-Pacific, they have engineers.
Right.
You have to contact the engineer and make sure that everything goes good, which I did. That engineer moved to El Paso, brought in a new engineer. So that engineer spoke to their boss, which is in Arkansas. I have all the documents from Uni-Pacific stating that I could continue to work over there. So, yeah, I mean, we have all the permission that we need to work over there. They were called, just based off another contractor calling on them. So.
And then also a visit from the USDA inspector.
USDA has been out there for the past three years, and it's coincidence that all three were called the same day by the same contractor.
Regardless.
Right. So USDA was there way before the project even started.
I doubt it was a coincidence.
But, um, so, so USDA's been out there for three years, right? And that's the whole reason why I have this up here to refinish the wall, is because USDA gave the zoo three years to complete the wall. If I do not proceed with this wall here, the zoo will be shut down.
And the protective netting for the bird?
That's a whole different project, yeah.
What's the update on that?
Right now, we are currently fixing our bid documents. And once we get those figured out and fixed, that would be out for advertisement, hopefully in the next week or two, which I already spoke to USDA. I'm on board with USDA, CID, and Uni-Pacific. We are all in the understandings. We all have everything organized, ready to go. I've been communicating with them almost every week, so.
And they've been getting all their locates? Because I've been where they've torn through a couple of power lines, underground power.
So that underground power is the city's line and is up to the city to locate, which is Public Works, anybody that's like, facility maintenance.
So we didn't get to locate for them?
They didn't locate it. So they hit two of the lines. I even documented saying, hey, you guys didn't locate, they hit the line. If they don't locate.
Right, right. I totally understand.
Same, same thing with Zuni. When they hit the lines doing the lights, they were never located. I mean, that, this is the oldest zoo in the southwest. So I mean, for anybody to find out where every single line is in that zoo is really hard to find.
I just wanna make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Yeah, and.
And there's been concerns raised. That's, that's why I'm asking, because we make all our other contractors, make sure they have everything that they're supposed to have before they construct work.
Yeah. And, you know, even on a locate.
Regardless of another contractor called.
Well, locates, locates on a private property.
Or whatever, on another contractor, because we've called states on our contractors.
So here's the thing, though, right? So locates, they can't locate on private property.
Right, I, I.
Yeah. So it would be up to facility maintenance, which they knew about, because they're the ones that actually took the lights, the wires off of the wall.
Right.
Because the lines were connected to the wall and under the wall. So they knew the project was started. So therefore, they should have marked the lines when they were supposed to, but no one did. They, the wires got fixed. It's sleeved into the footing now. We have it marked on our GPS system. So anything that we do find that, even on the other project, you know, with the lights, we've been marking everything just so that we have red lines for the zoo for future reference. So if we do have a locate inside of a private, private property, we won't run into that issue again, kind of thing, you know? So. But, yeah, this here is for approval to finish up the wall, because if USDA has required this for the past three years, so they pretty much told me this wall doesn't get finished, the zoo will close.
And how, how long do they have to get this done?
So once, if this gets approved, they have an additional ninety days to complete this part of the project. So as long as she sees, USDA sees progress by November, when she comes back, then she'll continue because she'll see progress. But if she only sees the duck pond completed and she doesn't see the rest of the wall, then that's where we're gonna run into the issue of the zoo being closed.
What fund are we pulling this money out of?
So if you recall, the 105 economic development, it was for the pool and other quality-of-life facilities. So it'll be coming from that.
We're gonna take part of the four million that got transferred to the pool to pay for this?
Part of the fund balance that's in 105. The tax that's coming to it, yeah.
The remainder of the 105 money?
Well, because we're still getting the tax from it.
Okay.
So.
Until the end of the year, correct? It'll sunset at the end of the year?
No. We're getting the tax, and it's been allocated to quality-of-life facilities. So we're still collecting the tax, and the money's gonna be pulled from that tax. I'm not quite sure exactly if it's gonna be pulled from 105, depending on where we have the cash at.
Okay. And then one other quick question. You did a bid, a base bid and a bid alternate. If you would have awarded them both of them at the same time, would it have changed the outcome of who it went to?
What do you mean? Like if?
Like, would the contractor have been, would it have been awarded to a different contractor?
No.
If they both would have awarded it?
No. So the other contractor that bitted against this one was substantially still higher.
Higher, okay.
So they still would have gotten awarded this project.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one other quick question. If the USDA's been on us for the last three years about that, how come we haven't heard about it?
So they've been documenting it, and that's why we've been putting the wall on the ICIP. So they, we haven't gotten written, written reprimand. I mean, we've gotten told about it. I guess we haven't gotten spanked or written or reprimanded. We got a new USDA, USDA representative, and she's been pretty a stickler for a lot of things happening in the zoo. So this is the year that she basically said that if you don't do it, we're gonna shut down the zoo. So that's why you're just hearing about it right now, because they were, we put it on the ICIP, we were working towards it, then it wasn't enough, and we did it again. So it kinda just came to head this year.
Because it has been on the ICIP list for quite a bit.
Even though we've made substantial gains in the exterior of that wall, they're still holding us to that timeframe?
Yes. Because we've said we're working on it, and because we, when we requested the money, it hasn't been enough. So at this point, it's like, we need to get it done because we've been telling them, we've been requesting the money from ICIP and kinda piecemealing the wall. So we're kinda at the third year. It's like, okay, you've told us this for three years. You guys really need to get this done.
Okay. Then one other quick question. What, what license classification is required to do that project down there?
GB ninety-eight. GA ninety-eight and GF ninety-eight is all three that they have. So GB ninety-eight for the actual wall. The other part, you can have a GF ninety-eight.
So who'd they have permit it for?
Themselves. So their partner actually has, so he has a partner that's an engineer, and he also has a GB ninety-eight. And they pulled the permit because that's his business partner. So he has a GA ninety-eight, a GF ninety-eight. His business partner is an engineer and has a GP ninety-eight.
Okay.
So his engineer was actually the one that was able to proceed with the permit because that's his partner in business.
Okay.
And then I'm just gonna go back to what Commissioner Burnett said. He's absolutely right. When we, these problems came up, we made errors, and I told, we need to fix them. I think we were all in agreement that sometimes we didn't know what we didn't know. We hold ourselves to the same standard that we're holding the other contractors, so we need to get it done. And we, that's why Justin and, I'm not sure Dave was involved, was working with CID and the contractor and facility maintenance to make sure we corrected our own errors.
Spectres come out, sign the plans as we proceed with the project, so everything's been going smooth.
What about the work that was performed without a permit? The first part of it that was performed without a permit?
It was signed off by the engineer, which is the business partner, because they said as long as he signs off on it, they'll accept it.
They'll accept it. Okay. Do we have photographs of what?
Oh, yeah. So we always have photographs on our daily reports. It's requirement from the inspectors to always do a daily log when it comes to pictures, notes, red lines, everything like that.
That way, if we get a premature failure of the, of the wall, we at least know who to blame?
Yeah. I mean, like I said, they just sign up on it, so.
Okay.
I'm sure it just won't fail. I mean, he's a, he's an engineer. I respect any engineer that signs off on things, so.
I have a question. Perimeter ironwork, Vincent Block, that's who we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Are they an out-of-town contractor?
They're from Albuquerque, yes.
They're from Albuquerque?
Uh-huh. They actually used to do work for the city back in the day, too, so.
Uh-huh. And you said there was only one other contractor that bid?
Correct.
And they were local?
Now they're local, yes. K E N G. The other two that showed up for the pre-bid number bitted on the job.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to, we're still on item five, right? Do you have a motion to approve item five?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven-zero. We're gonna move on to item eight. Consider and act upon the award of Public Works bid number 2025-003. It's concerning the La Luz South Reservoir cover tower and catwalk replacement.
Hold on. Hey, Dylan, it happened again.
I only got one item left. Can you just work off your PDF?
Well, I can't do the vote.
He can just, oh, can you take his vote verbally, and he can just work off his PDF, since there's only one item left?
There's also adjournment, but I can just go up there and fix this real quick while we're all discussing item eight.
I don't remember my password.
Why keeps kicking you out?
I don't know.
This time, I'm gonna put remember me on that.
I have too many passwords to remember.
I can relate.
If you try to change your password, it'll just say you can't use your state password.
Yeah. I, I don't, I didn't use, I didn't make that password up.
You have like a hundred passwords in like one year?
We can continue.
Oh, we, okay. All right. So I provided you all the information that the engineer recommended in the agenda, so I stand for a question?
Yeah. This is on item eight, correct?
Correct. The reservoir?
Yeah. So, so in the last meeting, we had, we were gonna approve another company to do this work on this project.
Mm-hmm.
And it was pulled, and now we're, we're going with a higher bid.
Yes. So I will actually let the engineer refer to that question.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Eddie Livingston. I'm president of Livingston Associates Engineers here in Alamogordo. Commissioner Tapley, as it shows in the documents, we took bids from two contractors. And in evaluation of the bids, one of the criteria is to look at unit costs in the bid rather than just the total cost. And when you look at the bid from the apparent low, there are two items that are considered unrealistic. And those items in the bid, which is in your package, item twelve, which are the tower gates, which are very important and expensive pieces of equipment. The apparent low bid forty thousand dollars on that, and he, in later communications with us, admitted that he had not received a bid from a supplier. And when he did, that cost is a hundred and sixty thousand. That doesn't include installation. So that bid item is very unrealistic, and it doesn't reflect the actual cost to do the work. And he mentioned that he could make up for that through other bid items, and that is really improper because each bid item is represented by the bidder to the cost that would be necessary to complete that bid item. And so you can't rob from Peter to pay Paul when you look at comparing the bid items. It shows an imbalance in the, in the bids. The second one was item number ten, which is the outlet tower, which is the thirty-foot-tall concrete tower that.
Oh, wow.
Diverts the water out of the reservoir into the pipeline. And that he bid at twenty-two thousand. And we asked him for a breakdown of that bid, and that bid, according to my structural engineer, is also unrealistic. And, and so really, when you look at those two items, the unrealistic bids sort of reflect the understanding of the bidder as to the work involved. And so when you have something that is bid so low and so far out of what would be considered a realistic bid, it opens up the contract to potential financial liability on the city's part, because in the other bid items, that could open up the possibility of overbuilding something or requesting more money or change orders, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a real red flag to me. And, and so looking at that bidder specifically, I cannot recommend as your consultant the word to that contractor. And so we're left with the only other bidder, K E N G. And so I recommended a word of that.
Got a quick question. On those two line items that you're talking about, they're unrealistic under low mountains the one way, but if you.
Correct.
K and G's are kinda unrealistic the other way, based off of your estimates. Like on the number ten, you've got it at ninety thousand, they came in at two hundred and thirty thousand on their line item. So is, is that not, I mean.
Well, yep.
Why is your, your estimate wrong, or is, or is their estimation wrong? Same thing with item twelve.
Yeah.
Or item twelve, eleven, twelve, twelve. You know, you came in at a hundred and thirty thousand, and they're at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So they're, they're almost double what your estimate would be.
Yep. Commissioner Rarden, the engineer always hates to be the low bidder on a project. So, you know, when we did our initial estimate, as the project was formulating, prices have gone up since then substantially. Polyethylene and a lot of other costs have gone up. So we are a little bit low, I think, in our, in our bid. Also, whenever we bid projects, there's a range of bidders. You have low to medium to high. And so, you know, I think on this project, we got a medium and a high. So, yes, his cost, but they're sort of uniformly high all throughout, and not just a couple of items. And, you know, when they're high, that's, at least in our opinion, the contractor has thought through the bid item, and there's plenty of money to build it. When it's way low and totally unrealistic on that end, that's, you know, that's the red flag.
What about line item five? Your, your engineer's estimate's a hundred and eighty thousand, and they're at eighty-seven thousand. So should we raise a red flag on that one for K and G's? They're a hundred thousand lower than what?
Right.
What you're at?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yep.
So my, my big concern here, you know, I bid stuff all the time, not to this magnitude. Would it have been justified to say, hey, look, if you can keep this number here and move your numbers around to, and still be here and to justify, I, I mean, I understand when you're trying to, you're under a timeline to get numbers, and sometimes you cannot beg people to give you the numbers.
Right.
And just say, I mean, could you have given that option? Because, because they clearly state here in their, in their correspondence, we are confident with the overall pricing and look forward to a very successful project installation.
That's right. Well, we can't, we can't have the bidder change his numbers or move stuff around.
He's not gonna change, change the bottom number, but can he, he can move things around. I mean, is that not legal?
No, that's not.
Oh, okay.
That's not proper to do within the.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah. And again, it, it speaks to, so there's two issues. I mean, there's, what's the bottom line number? And, you know, what is the perceived contractor's understanding of the project? And so first of all, you have to evaluate the bid based on its standing itself. And which is, and so when you do that, you look at the low bidder's numbers, those two items raise a big red flag. When you don't go out and get supplier bids and those kind of things, it, it just raises a big red flag. And, and it, it shows a perceived possible misunderstanding, and he's gotta make up for those big losses in other bid items. for those big losses in other bid items. And if the contractor was really representing, or if the bidder was really representing, what he thought it would take to build each one of those items, well, there's not a lot of extra money in each one of the items, that he can just move over here to over here. So he's going to be looking for ways to add additional dollars to the contract by either overrunning unit cost items, or, you know, asking for a change order for some reason. I mean, you know, we've seen this stuff before, and so, like I said, it's just a big red flag. And so, instead of trying to say, oh, this guy's lower, this guy's higher, you know.
Well, just go with the higher one, and just get the change order.
Well, you, I, I'm recommending we reject the lower one because of these inconsistencies, and then we're left with the higher. I mean, it'd be great if we had 10 bidders on the project, then we'd have more to choose from, but we don't. So, you know, this is what we have.
So, as the commission, you can approve whatever you want, or have us reject it and go back out. So, I mean.
My, my question is, is, is this something that we need to get done in a hurry, or is it something that can wait?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It does need to be something that needs to be done.
I mean, is it something that we have time to put back out to rebid? Because if you look at KENG's bids, here's another.
But not, not to mention, though, you have, there's also a 10% preference to it, too. So they're only 50,000.
But if you look at their bid, the demo of the floating cover, you've got $200,000 figured in, they've only got $22,000 figured on their end. Where are the other companies at 70,000? So we, we've got a lot of different discrepancies between both bids. And, you know, like I say, typically, in the past, when a bid is within 10% of each other, then we consider that a decent bid. But, you know, I'm just a little concerned about that. You raised concerns on Lone Mountain, but we have the same concern on KENG. So, but is it something that we have time to, to put back out to bid?
For, for us in the water production area, we're under a time constraint, because right now, we have to drain that reservoir all the way down. The only time we have, what we would call is excess waters to refill that.
Is it winter time?
You know, to be prepared for spring, is to do this during the winter. If we rebid this, it might, where were you going to be in September? We would be October, November by time, November, December realistically, before we start construction.
And then not to.
And we're going to be early summer, yeah.
And we have three years to spend.
What's the anticipation or the estimated time?
Timeline?
For the.
Completion.
Was it 11 months, was it not? Or 10?
I think it was 11.
It was 11, 11.
11.
11 months.
11 months.
So even if we started it tomorrow, we'd still be in the middle of summer.
But not to mention, we're still on a time constraint, too, because this is part of the loan that we were talking about when it comes to water rates, rates. So we have that three years that we have to try to use that money for it. And then not to mention also, like I was saying before, when it comes to local preference, you know, this is a 10%, they're only technically, with the local preference, a 10%, there are $50,000 apart from each other, all said and done. So we have the time where we need to get it out now. And then also, when it comes to the money, not to mention what he has already told you, you also have the local preference to where now it's actually closer in price technically, when it comes to that.
All right, I'm just a little concerned, like I say, you guys have made concerns on Lone Mountain, and based off your engineer's estimates, you know, KENGs has some that are way low, some that are way high.
So, so the biggest thing is, the reason why I pulled it the last time, is because we had received an email at the last minute, and I rushed over to try to pull it before you even got out. But he has sent, as you could see in the proposal, it shows $159,000 for the material itself. And that's why Eddie's bringing up the fact that it's $159,000 just for the material, plus the labor. So if KENG's over $200,000, that's including labor. The 159,000 is just for the material, so that's not including labor. So if you add that 159 plus the labor, they're technically already over that 10% preference to where now they're over that 50,000 difference to, in reality, if they had that proposal before they bitted, you know, there's, that's why he's saying there's a lot of red flags when it comes to the bidding on each bid item.
Did, did we have any other bidders that maybe went to the pre-bid meeting but didn't bid?
Yes.
How many were, how many total were there?
Total, including liners, or just actual contractors?
Contractors.
Four.
So we had a total of four, but only two responsive bidders?
Correct, which is normally how it works. This, how is all, how has been a lot on the projects?
How, it's probably more of an engineer's question, but how specialized is the contractor for this type of work? I mean, it's not, not everybody's going to go in and rehab reservoirs.
Yeah, no, that's, that's correct. The work on the liner and the floating cover is a subcontractor to both of these bidders.
Both of them.
It's a specialty contractor that comes out of California, the one that they're using. The construction of the outlet tower is vertical concrete work, which not everybody does that. You know, it's specialty forming, and using pump trucks and things like that, so that's, it's not an everyday concrete job. It's a, it takes a contractor that knows what they're doing, so that's, you know, that's part of this concern with the, with the low bidder. And, and on, to speak to your comment on KENG, someone that bids higher doesn't raise red flags compared to somebody that bids unrealistically low, so.
How come the 45-mil floating cover is considerably almost a million dollars more on almost both bids? Do we?
Yeah, it is on both bids, because they're both using the same subcontractor. And again, that's price increase in polyethylene.
Since you did your.
Correct, yes, sir.
On this one.
Any more questions?
In the event that we did reject bids and put it back out to rebid, you said it'd take, where'd Dave go? You said it'd take two months probably to get a bid back out?
It'll take. So normally, to start from advertisement to actual construction, it takes me about four months. Takes me two months to get in front of you, and then another two months because you've got some middles, getting everything. So by this time, we're in September, pretty much, I mean, that's January already, so by the time we get done with the project.
So we're looking at the end of.
Next year, December.
We're looking at the end of next year before this reservoir's back on?
If we put it back out, yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, we are on a time constraint, because this is part of the loan that we were talking about when it comes to water rates.
We've got three years, and we just got it earlier this year, correct?
Yeah, but we also have other projects that we're trying to put out, so to put this one back pushes my other projects back. Like, for example, the three water tanks, or, you know, any other water infrastructure projects that I have, is going to push everything back. And then, by that time that three years comes, like, everything has planned out for the next two years at least, you know?
Justin, is this something we can take back to both bidders and ask them to correct their numbers?
You can't correct numbers when it comes to this.
So it has to start from the very beginning?
It has to start from the very beginning.
Even if it's just these two?
Yep, and even if it's just these two, so. And I will tell you, if we do put it back, now that he does have a proposal, that number's going to be higher than what he has now. And even with that local preference, like I mentioned before, it's still going to be, you know, with that 10%, they're still going to be lower than Lone Mountain, so either way, you know.
Where's Lone Mountain out of?
Albuquerque.
Albuquerque. They don't get a local, I guess they don't, because they don't have an office here in Elmo?
Correct. Yep.
But the Phoenix company does, or the Tucson company?
They're local.
Yeah, they rent, lease a car lot.
But they also have a business license, and they have all their documentation showing that they are local. Which therefore, when they pay their taxes, it'll be local. Any other questions?
Any more questions? Okay.
I'm toward what to do on this one.
Do I have a motion to approve item eight?
So moved.
A motion for Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson, can we put up the vote, please?
Is that the last item?
And motion does not pass. Motion fails, three to four, however you say that. Okay.
Do you need, I guess that means you guys are going to reject bids, and then you'll send it back out?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. You don't need a motion to, along those lines?
No, sir.
Sorry, it's just, something seems a little funny on those numbers, so.
Your call, you're the commissioners.
If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second from Commissioner Tapley, can we put up the vote, please?
What do we do if the adjournment vote fails?
Stay here all night?
We keep trying.
We are adjourned. Let's not find out.
So.